Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's St. Charles County Council meeting. We'll start with our invocation. Pastor Kevin Cobb from Grace Baptist Church is going to lead us in that invocation, and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand and remove your caps, please.
Father God, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come and bow before you today. We acknowledge that you're the risen Savior and that we celebrate this Easter week, the power that comes that through life over death. And, Lord, we pray for those in our county this week that they would acknowledge that, celebrate it, that the church houses would be full, and that the gospel message of Christ would be proclaimed. For tonight, for this council meeting, I pray for each of these councilmen, as they represent the individuals that they serve, Lord, that they would come to consensus and unity in areas that would benefit this county. What I pray that they would acknowledge the stewardship that they have, giving account to you. What I pray that you would bring just a harmony and a peace to the meeting even this evening, that those that would speak would really have the best intentions of the county. Lord, I pray for those that give counsel, that they would be wise and give counsel that's profitable and helpful. I pray for the councilmen, the executive, that they would be wise in the decisions that they make. Lord, bless the sheriff, bless his deputies, keep them safe, and those that respond to the needs of citizens in time of emergency. We thank you for them. Ask your blessings upon them and their families. Lord, he love you, and we're thankful again for your freedom that you've given us through Jesus Christ. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kevin. Let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
We have no public presentations tonight, but we do have a public hearing on traffic regulations. And with that, I would invite our county engineer, Craig Tukowski, to come up and give us a quick explanation as to the process on what happens with traffic regulations.
Periodically, we receive requests from residents for new traffic regulations, whether they be no parking zones, speed limit changes, stop sign additions or deletions. And their responsibility is to submit a petition with 15 names on it that support whatever it is they're requesting. And what you have before you tonight is the most recent petitions that we've received. The processes will have two public hearings. Residents are invited to come to either one or the other or both and give their comments, either pro or con, as far as the requested regulation. Following that, we'll go out and we'll take a look at it. Based on what comments we hear from the folks, so we know what it is that we should be looking for when we get out there, in case there's something that's not readily apparent. And we'll come back to you with a recommendation on those that we believe should be implemented. And it will be up to you to make a decision on whether any of those are.
Very well. Thank you. Is there anyone to speak tonight during this public hearing? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Micah Huff. I'm here on behalf of a petition to put a stop sign in at Fox Ridge and McCollie Way. I have three young children who play at the corner along with the other neighborhood kids. A lot of the other young parents have young children, very concerned about the speed of various cars that go through the intersection. It is a safety concern. I think a lot of the other young families with young kids would also voice support of putting a stop sign there. I think it would help slow down traffic. It would be a lot safer for the kids who do play in the streets or ride their bikes. And so I think there's some other families that may show up at the next hearing for support of it, but I just did want to come and voice my support for the stop sign at the corner of Fox Ridge and McCollie Way.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to public comments. Carol, who is our first speaker tonight?
One speaker, and that's Arnie A.C. Dinoff.
You can members of the county council, Arnie A.C. Dinoff, public advocate, in county resident. First of all, I'd like to say that my condolences and respect go out to a fallen law enforcement officer who was involved in responding to a domestic call in Berry County. Master Sergeant Deputy Carl Casper of the Berry County Sheriff's Office lost his life on Friday, and I think that we need to extend condolences to him and his family. Also, this morning, in St. Bernardino, California, a elementary school was attacked by an attacker in a murder-suicide. Two children were severely injured and transported, air-evac to area hospitals, and two adults unfortunately lost their life. So my heart goes out to those families. On the consent agenda of the county council tonight is the highway department purchase of several vehicles. Again, we're buying out of the county and not in St. Charles County, giving our local businesses who employ our neighbors and our friends the added business. Don Brown Chevrolet out of St. Louis for the purchase of two V6 trucks at $24,983 apiece and four V8 trucks at $24,983 plus $1,239 for an up change or an upcharged vehicle. It's wrong when we can buy them right here at home in St. Charles County at the same price. A little effort from our finance department would go a long way. Last meeting of the county council, I let you know the passing of a 33-year veteran, Rodney Zare, of our law enforcement family. Four days before his funeral, called the captain and the police department over giving him honor, dignity, and a funeral salute. I sent an email for request to the sergeant of the honor guard for funeral arrangements and the captain over the sergeant. This email was also sent to each county council member, the county executive, director of administration, the chief of staff, the sergeant to the police chief, two other county police staff, and the county sheriff. It was sent also to county executive Steve Elman and chief of police Dave Todd. On behalf of the Zare family, I ask that all flags of all county-owned buildings be flown at half-staff, two, that a two-member honor guard be provided at the funeral service, three, that a full gun salute be provided at the burial site at Bowery Funeral Home. None of these were done, and it's shameful that we couldn't put the boxing gloves and the animosity of politics on the shelf. And it's shameful that it's undignified and dishonorable, the stance of malicious hate and the disrespect paid to the Zare family by our county executive, by the county administration, and especially to the presiding judge of the 11th County Circuit Court, Judge Zare, who's his brother, and it's a shame.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Your time has expired. That is our only speaker for this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's move on to the oral report from the county executive.
No report tonight.
Thank you, sir. That moves us on to the consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda tonight?
I'd like to remove the finance armored car services and the information systems professional services. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those two have been removed. Any other items to be removed?
Motion for approval for the remaining ballots.
Second.
Motion approved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is done, except for, we'll move back to finance. Mr. Cronin?
I don't recall ever seeing before in the last six years bid for armored car, and I guess I have two concerns. One is it's a sole bid, and there's no other, all the other armored car companies, nobody bid it but Brink's. Secondly is, I'd much rather see that $53,000 go to raises for the police department or hire another police department, and maybe we could get those guys to take the money to the bank. So that's my question, that's my comments there. And I don't know, you know, if this is some new service that we did, I saw that it just starts, the contract is for starting May 1, so if they have an existing armored car service they're replacing, or why we never saw it the last six years. On the information systems, I've got issues there as well. This is also a sole bidder. There's only one, we only get one price from one company on it. And essentially, it's $380,000 for medical records for prisoners and folks at the health department that receive services at the health department.
Can you do me a favor for a second? Can we deal with finance first before we move on to that one?
Yeah. I just make comments, and if they want to speak about it, they can.
Okay. So does anybody else have a comment about the finance?
You mean at Brink's?
Yes.
No, I agree with what you're saying. I don't know why, I don't remember doing it.
Can you yield some information on that one?
Yeah, I mean, I think that most of the money for that is in the court's budget. So, you know, with the courts, as you know, we have to accept their budget, our appeal to Jefferson City. Is that, am I correct in that?
Well, some of it, $11,360 is in their budget, but this would be more than full-time for an officer to be running around, plus we'd have to produce another car. And a lot of this has to go on at the same time to make these deposits. This is longstanding with the county. It's bid periodically. I'd have to find out from Bob the last time it was bid. But we have these armored car services now because this money has to go in and out from finance, from the courts, from the family arena. They don't want this kind of cash on hand because of the danger of having that kind of cash on hand.
Why have we never seen this before?
I can't tell you that you've never seen it before. I don't, I'd have to go find out. Bob's sick tonight.
Okay.
But I could find out from him the last time it was bid.
Yeah, like this contract, they require you to come back for four years, so it may have been four years if we did it as a similar term since you last saw it, but we can get that.
I don't remember last time I saw it either, but I know we've always done it. And it's a big deal at the courthouse because people are almost always paying in cash for their fines, and that's why the, that's how I was familiar with it.
Are we using Brink's now? Do you know?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's in the summary that you all got, I think, from Bob. Sorry.
I didn't see it. I kind of read through it. And I guess, how does this $50,000 a year compare to what we're paying currently? It's kind of like when you get a new trash company, did your trash bill go up or go down, or is it about the same?
I'm sick. And Bob wasn't expecting to be sick. It wasn't pre-planned, so let me, let me get those.
But this way, I'm okay with passing this. I'm just saying, if you wouldn't check into that, I'd like to know if we were, if it's current, if it's comparable to what we're paying now, the same company we're doing now. That's, and with that, I think we go ahead and pass it, and I'll trust Steve to make sure of that before he signs it.
Second motion.
A motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So the finance bid is passed. Sorry, now can we move on to the information systems?
My only question here is, is there any way that we can do this somehow in-house or another way? Because seriously, I mean, most of this is going to prisoners, and I got, it just rubs me the wrong way when I know there's people in my district that can't afford health care, but we're spending, you know, $300,000 to make sure people's health care records are done in the county. And maybe there's, there's more to it than that, but to me, you know, the bad people, the folks that are in jail for bad things, I'm not concerned about their health records. I'm more concerned about the people in my district have a health insurance.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that, but councilman, this serves both the Department of Public Health and the medical records for corrections. We have been working on this for four years. Believe me, if we could have even vaguely thought of doing it in-house, we would have. This not only will allow public health to be able to track their records for all the clinics that they run, and also allow us to do some medical billing against people's insurance that we've been being rejected on up till now. It's also critical to Larry's use of medical in the jail. Right now, he, the hardest thing in the world in this entire county to recruit is a nurse to work in corrections who will stay there. And so what, what they're doing right now is tracking everything by hand. If they can't go to medical records on the inmates, I don't know what the man will do.
Okay. Did you select this vendor by RFQ process, or how, because you only, there was no bids, okay?
That's, we've, if you go to page two of the summary document, you'll see it's not a sole bidder. We use a RFP process that set out in the purchasing policy that you all approved last year. There were six or so vendors who all responded to that RFP. You only see the price because we only negotiate with that top vendor for these types of projects. And Tricia Matecki is here. She could provide more detail in terms of the scope of the database if you want to understand the complexity of why this is something we do not do ourselves.
So basically, you used similar type process to RFQ. You went through the vendors, found what you considered the best vendor, and then how did you negotiate the price from there? How did you negotiate the price?
You want the details of how they negotiated the price?
And let me, two quick questions. Are we asking about the Department of Corrections bid specifically, or Department of Public Health?
They're both the same folks, right?
Same folks, but just when you said $300,000.
Well, I'm talking about the same folks. Because my question is, you know, if I'm trying to sell the county something, and I know I'm the preferred vendor, there's really no competitive incentive for me to try to do it at the most advantageous price to the county. That's the, that's the flaw, I guess, of the RF, the RFQ-type system.
If you keep in mind that structure for the kind of combined RFP process that we're using primarily for like highly-technical software-type packages, we can take price into account as part of that overall consideration and part of that overall score. It's just not the driver. So depending on how the bid specifically was structured, and Tricia can mention that, she can tell you how we came to arrive at that price based on the services that we required.
Okay.
Did you want her to come forward and do that?
I'd be curious to see how she did it, sure.
Do you want to have that discussion now, or do you want to have a discussion offline?
Does anybody else have that concerns that I have, or just leave that up to them? I mean, I'd be curious how the process went, if she could give us a minute or two.
That was her.
Okay.
Andrea? Sorry, Andrea, not Tricia.
Hi, Andrea. Unfortunately, you were not sick tonight.
Not sick tonight. Good evening. I am the business analyst that worked with both the corrections and the public health RFP process. Like Jennifer said, we did have, I think, six for corrections and maybe even a couple more for the public health. What we ended up doing is we scored not only based on ability, but we did take price into the account. We brought the top finalists in, and they showed us demos. From there, we ended up with two companies that we thought were good choices, and we actually negotiated price to a certain extent with both of those companies. And we compared the offerings of each, and our winner at this point actually came down significantly from their original price. Part of what we worked into that deal was for our strategic alignment, for them to have both departments, they were willing to compromise and come down on their price to kind of meet us in the middle for a budget there, so. Do you have any questions?
You feel it's a good deal for the county, then?
I do. I feel, looking at our options, these were the two top runners in functionality and best fit. Corrections was particularly challenging because of the method that they use isn't the cookie cutter EMR. So we went with a company that not only had experience in that, but had a great experience in public health as well, so that it would fit both departments, and then we'd be managing the one system, the one software.
All right. Thank you for the information. I appreciate your work on it.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? And the information systems item is approved. That finishes up the consent agenda tonight. Mr. Brazel, do you have a motion on Resolution 17-01?
Oh, we can bring it forward if you'd like.
So I have a motion to move Resolution 17-01 off the table and to the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? It is back on the table. Donna, do you want to?
I'll read the title. A resolution relating to the supplementary flood risk mitigation plan for St. Charles County, Missouri.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
On the buyouts, is this, on this part, there's, is there 38 additional buyouts? Who does this?
This would be Robert, I'm guessing. Welcome back.
Robert, is there 38 additional buyouts with this resolution? Is that what it was?
I don't know that it's necessarily additional. Actually, in the 2009 plan, we stated that we had like 120-something that we had listed for potential buyout and for research. Instead of 120-something, we're now saying 38. And basically, it's a list that we maintain of severe repetitive loss structures. And of those, we work with property owners to see who might be interested in selling their property if it's severe repetitive loss. In other words, they might take out more insurance claims than the property's actually worth over a period of years. But it's a totally voluntary program, and they're typically, there are 100% grants through the State Emergency Management Agency, and we don't have to provide any match. And the final cost or value of the home is negotiated between, actually FEMA and the property owner.
So the state, is it state taxes or federal taxes that pay for the buyout?
It's, as I understand it, it's federal money. It comes through the State Emergency Management Agency.
And so, and so they're not forced to sell? They're just, if they want to sell, then they're kind of, they'll offer them an appraisal or whatever, and they can offer them the money or whatever the agreement is, correct?
Right. It's actually a negotiated amount at the end. Both parties have to agree. And some people honestly are kind of desperate to get out from underneath a property that, you know, is flood repetitive loss building. So this program is, helps them out, helps them out.
So currently, there's like 1,500 properties that got bought out in the last so many years. What are we doing with that 1,500? Who maintains that? Who's responsible for it after there's a buyout?
There were, over the years, there were over 1,400 properties that St. Charles County bought out due to, they were flood-prone properties. The vast majority of those were in 1994, 1995, after, obviously after the 1993 flood. Since that time, there's been maybe about two dozen properties that have been, the county has purchased with this grant program. So it's, it's much different pace than it was right after the 1993 flood. But these properties that are bought out by the county using state or federal money, much of the time, we own them. Some of these are now parkland, for instance, within the city of St. Charles, some parkland. Other property, the county owns, but we don't necessarily use it for anything. Basically, we own it, and we maintain it as, as open land or open property that'll never get built upon.
So that's my question, is when you have 1,500 properties, are there about, who mows the grass? Who do you guys tear down the old buildings? I mean, what do you, what happens? Is this some dilapidated piece of property? And I'm just curious, because I don't understand why it becomes our burden. I don't even know why we're buying these things out. If someone makes a bad decision and buys property in a flood plain, why should the taxpayers have to buy them out of it? But I know that's not your deal. I'm just asking you, is why, who maintains these properties?
For the ones that are not rented to an adjacent landowner, which is many times what happens, is an adjacent landowner says, I'd really like to have use of a bigger area around my property, so we have a minimal fee. It's 100 bucks, I think, a year or something, we lease it to them. For those that we don't lease, facilities maintenance has a ground crew group that does nothing but go around and cut the grass on these and trim them back to keep them. They're mostly up, obviously, in the confluence area, and so we were up there cutting grass from spring to fall.
Well, that's my question, though. What account, where is that? If there's 1,500 properties, or let's say we're, how many are we mowing? 1,000? 800? And what account does that come from? And who takes care of that? The Parks Department? We certainly, we can't even, we were trying-
Facilities Maintenance has a crew that, Mike Buford over Facilities Maintenance.
Yeah, but just last year, we'd been out taking care of 10 towers, the mow around them. So how are we, here's my point, is we're taking on 38 more. If we bid out the towers, we were going to weed with the towers, that was what, 30,000 or something, Joe, or something like that?
Here's the thing, though, most of these, a lot of these are river lots and the like. Every spring, the water's going to come up and knock the weeds down anyway. You probably don't have to do anything to them, okay?
Most of the ones that we cut, we cut when the neighbors complain. If there's a 25 properties out along the river and nobody lives there, we just let it stay natural. But we've had people come in here in the past, you know, and complain that, hey, you know, it's been two weeks, you know, or two months, and you haven't cut your grass. And we send somebody out there the next day and ask our people why they, why they waited so long.
A lot of these are in developed stuff. I mean, they're, you know, not a typical subdivision, but because the houses are all raised, but we're down there cutting the grass on them. And to your point, Joe, yeah, there is a county expense associated with that. I don't know how much, what part of our budget really goes to that. I mean, what, what the dollar amount is.
It's done internally, so it's, you know, the cost of the mowers every few years and the personnel time during the summer, so.
Let's put it this way, the amount of money we spend mowing the grass is far, far short of the amount of money we would spend policing and maintaining the roads if the people still lived there. So overall, from the county budget standpoint, didn't cost us anything to get the property, does cost us something to maintain it.
Yeah, the buyout properties.
Yeah, no, I was just curious. I don't understand.
It's all good.
Yeah. I didn't realize we had 1,500 properties, and that's a lot. I mean, if you mow them once a month, think about it.
A lot of them, we do lease to the neighboring property owners, and then they have to cut the grass.
It would be kind of nice to see the inventory and see what's going on with them.
Mr. White?
Just to answer your question, Joey, not all these people decided to live in the flood plain. There's a house in my district that the property's been bought up all around her, but she never qualified to be bought out. So here's her house standing alone in an area where we didn't have the zoning for houses back then. And then all the development and heritage and all the development north of her, above that creek, she gets all that water now, and she floods almost every time there's a one-inch or two-inch episode of rain. And the poor lady can't be bought out because she never qualified. She didn't.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just curious what we're doing with all this property.
So there's some people that really do need to be bought out, because this house is going to end up being, being just a dilapidated property that's going to be something that eventually be abandoned, and it'll be an eyesore, and...
So in that situation, does the county have the funds to tear the house down and clean up the property? Or do we leave the, that's my question, do we leave the dilapidated house there?
It needs to be bought and torn down.
When we buy a house using federal or state money, right after the house is sold, we'll end up tearing down the property using, again, that grant money as part of it. It rolls over into the whole project. But in the, what's interesting in the plan, it mentions that in 2015 and 2016, about, our best estimate is about 600 properties that were flood-bought out properties flooded five to eight feet deep at one time in 2015 or 16. So if those properties had still had houses, you could be talking about hundreds of homes that, that preventative measure, and that pays us back again and again and again, year after year, each time it, we can avoid flooding and stay out of the way.
Thank you, Robert. Any other questions or comments about the resolution? Can we read the resolution?
Resolution 17-01, a resolution-
Thank you, Robert.
-relating to the supplementary flood risk mitigation plan for St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Resolution 17-01 passes. Thank you, gentlemen. On to bills for final passage, up to Bill number 4455.
Bill number 4455, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-1 and accepting said grant in the amount of $83,198 for design apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-1 and accepting said grant in the amount of $83,198 for design apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4455 passes on to Bill number 4456.
Bill number 4456, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-2 and accepting said grant in the amount of $69,371 for design runway, electrical, lighting system rehabilitation and new vault at Smart Field Airport.
Any questions or comments about 4456?
Yes, I'd like to offer a substitute bill, 4456. There's just a clerical error, so this is, you know.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have substitute bill 4456 on the floor. Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
Substitute bill number 4456, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-2 and accepting said grant in the amount of $69,731 for design runway, electrical, lighting system rehabilitation and new vault at Smart Field Airport. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number 4456 passes on to-
Yes, sir.
Does this violate?
No.
No, clerical error.
Clerical error, okay, thank you. Okay. Me and you are on the same wavelength.
On to Bill number 4457.
Bill number 4457, an ordinance approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Peters for traffic flow improvements on Mid Rivers Mall Drive between McManamy Road and Mid Rivers Mall entrance.
Any questions or comments on 4457? It's feeling like the council was clairvoyant there for a second.
An ordinance approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Peters for traffic flow improvements on Mid Rivers Mall Drive between McManamy Road and Mid Rivers Mall entrance. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Bill number 4458 passes. That concludes bills for final passage. On to bills for introduction, starting with Bill number 4459.
Bill number 4459, requested by Mike Klinghammer, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance amending ordinance number 16-100 requiring that, with certain designated exceptions, bills which have been substantially amended after introduction and prior to final passage be placed on the next duly scheduled council meeting agenda.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Mr. Cronin?
Mike and, Mike Klinghammer and Keith Hazelwood did a really good job to help folks out in hinterlands like my district where we have exception, where we have people where we can make substitutions at the last minute with council approval. So you guys did a good job on this and I think it's much better than the original bill.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill number 4460.
Bill number 4460, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing execution of a road relinquishment agreement between the county and the City of St. Peters for an exchange of excess right of way parcels related to the Pinewood subdivision drainage improvements and Salt River Road extension project.
Any questions or comments about 4460? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4461.
Bill number 4461, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Secretary of State for a grant awarded to the Director of Elections and amending the 2017 budget adopted as ordinance 16-104 by making supplemental appropriations to the Election Authority Fund in the amount of $65,636 for an election efficiency grant to assist with election activities, systems and equipment maintenance, voting equipment purchases, maintaining voter lists and polling place accessibility.
Any questions or comments about 4461? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 4462.
Bill number 4462, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance waiving liquor license fees for certain concessions operations of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of St. Charles for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, whereas the St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department requests the fees for liquor licenses for certain concession, concessions, operations of the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department be waived. Now therefore be it ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the county registrar is hereby authorized and directed to waive liquor license fees for the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department facilities in Blanchett Park, McNair Park, Mueller Park and Wappelhars Park for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. Whereas the St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department requests the fees for liquor licenses for certain concession, concessions, operations of the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department be waived. Now therefore be it ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the county registrar is hereby authorized and directed to waive liquor license fees for the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department facilities in Blanchett Park, McNair Park, Mueller Park and Wappelhars Park for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4463.
Bill number 4463, requested by Robert Schnur, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance to establish a retirement plan advisory committee for management of the county 401A defined contribution and 457 deferred compensation plans.
Any questions about 4463? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 4464.
Bill number 4464, requested by Belinda Little, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance amending ordinance section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO relating to the classification plan in the Personnel Administration Plan for St. Charles County.
Any questions on 4464? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 4465.
Bill number 4465, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance calling an election on August 8, 2017 to amend the St. Charles County Charter to provide for the regulation of transportation network companies in any political subdivision wholly within St. Charles County, except school districts throughout the entire county within as well as outside incorporated municipalities.
I would ask you a couple of different things on this bill. Number one, if anyone would like to be added to this bill as a co-sponsor, I would be more than happy to entertain anybody else who would like to be a part of this. I would also ask you to table this bill until we let the legislature in Jefferson City finish up. Senator Onder is currently working through his bill on this. If we are lucky and God likes us, he will pass this bill in Jefferson City and this will be the law statewide and we won't have to piecemeal this thing together. So this bill was patterned after the bill that's currently working its way through the legislature. Hopefully, by doing a show of support there, then we can get that bill through there. It will be statewide and we'll be ready to go. Mr. Brazel?
When is the legislature supposed to have something hammered out?
County Executive, do you have an update from him, from Senator Onder?
Third, third Friday.
Second Friday. Second Friday in May, they have to adjourn by 6:00 PM.
Oh, so we'd have time though to put it on the ballot still, right, Steve, for August?
Pardon me?
Would we still have time to put it on the ballot?
Well, that's what I was going to add, add to what the chairman was saying. Somebody say, well, if, if we're going to wait and see what they do, why don't we just wait till May 15th? Well, forget it, to get it on the ballot in August, if that's what you all decide to do, we would have to go ahead and pass the ordinance by the end of May. Okay? So we're basically first reading it now. We probably, you know, if we're going to do it, would probably have to do it the second meeting in May. And so what that means is if you all have amendments, if you have questions, if, if you'd like to change some things, if we, you know, if we wait and make the amendments at the second meeting in May, then we have to hold it over for another meeting and then we'll, we'll miss the deadline. So that's why we're putting it out there now. I don't want anybody to say, hey, we didn't have time to debate this or didn't really understand what was going on. If there, people want to have a discussion about it, we can have that discussion, but we can't, I don't think we can wait until after the legislature adjourns because we won't really have time to have the discussion then. But I agree with the chairman. I, I, I hope this bill passes and we won't have to even take this up again.
Mr. Cronin?
I'm in support of this with one exception. I've read a lot about the insurance liability for Uber and Lyft online just recently in the last few days and some states are requiring insurance certificates be issued to the regulatory authority. So that being said, if you're asking for IDs or amendment, I'm all for this. I'd like my name put on it. But if we move forward and put it out there, I think the county should require insurance certificates for liability and bodily injury for the people that ride in these vehicles. I know that they've got a real unique way of doing it in Uber and Lyft, what I've read on it, but I think some states are requiring certificates in place to make sure that happens and I would like Mr. Hazelwood to look into that.
Mr. Hammond?
I'd like to be added in support of the, added to this bill and I, if you've been to other states and you've used Uber, I tell you, it's, it's, or any of the other transportation systems might be available. I found it very useful and, and a heck of a lot cheaper than calling a cab. I, I can remember calling a cab to go somewhere and it cost me almost $50 and then I called Uber to go back the other direction and it only cost me 25, so I, I, I was pleased.
There you go. Mr. Hollander?
Yes, add my name to that.
I'd like my name on it also. The times I've used it, it is amazing what technology can do. It's a shame the taxi cab companies didn't step up to the plate and, and do it also, but maybe this will force their hand.
Okay. Mr. White?
I put my name on it too, but I do agree with Joe, there should be some insurance consequence.
Very well. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, following up on what Mr. Klinghammer said, you know, people say, you know, this is an Uber bill or Lyft bill. Well, that's who's going to benefit now, but more importantly, it's going to benefit any other people who come along with an even better idea. I mean, that's, that's the problem because of these taxi cab commissions, there's basically a guild there and you got to belong to the guild to be in the game. And when somebody comes and wants to offer a new product, you know, they basically can't do that. So right now, it'll benefit Uber and Lyft, but I think, you know, in the future, who knows? Somebody may come up with an even better idea and they're able to compete and then we let the market decide, the people decide which ones they want to use.
Yes, Mr. Brazel?
You can put my name on there as well. I think this is great. This is great for the wine district. You know, we try to promote people for not drinking and driving.
Yes.
And I cannot understand for life for me why we even have to go through all this trouble. I don't even know why, they just can't do it, you know? But I, I, I don't understand that. But, but this would be great for the wine district. It'll reduce traffic accidents and it's an all-around good thing. I mean, I'm 100% behind it.
So I would ask that we amend this to include council as a whole. And do I have a motion to table this bill?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we will table this, I'm sorry, any opposed? I always forget to do that. So, so we will table this bill until further notice. Tabled bill that we have is still remaining tabled, I assume, Mr. Brazel?
Well, yeah, now that Mike has his bill, we can either just let it die or we can vote to have it removed or whatever you guys want.
Why don't we pull it off and vote it down?
Okay.